Okay, it is six o'clock. I'll call the meeting in order. I'll take row call. Mr. Dominic.
President.
Mr. Helm.
Here.
Ms. Lyon.
Yep.
Ms. Cleveland. Mr. Kaber.
Here.
Ms. DeBlock. Mr. Fullerlove. Here. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. This is Pearl. Okay, so thank you for coming to our regular August meeting. I can now say this is our second annual, because we've done it twice now, second annual State of the District address. Mr. Boucher used to do these in February. We'd do them in the office and not a lot of people would see it. And so Dr. Johnson had the idea of wanting to do this, kick off the school year, kind of talk about what's going on, what we, the goals we achieved last year and where we're going for this year. We have all been really happy to have Dr. Johnson on board. He's starting his third year with us. During the summer, you may or may not have seen that we extended Dr. Johnson's contract for five years because we have that much faith in him. We really appreciate what he brings to the district. This summer, we did a teacher negotiation and he really, really put our teachers first, really wanted to make sure that they were getting all the great compensation. You see a lot of other districts that were going through strikes and he brought in a very different approach that many, many teachers, I hope, appreciated. Other things that we see and the other reasons why we extended his contract is go look around a lot of other school districts in the Quad Cities and some that will remain nameless, but you see what's going on in that district where they are basically have multiple superintendents. And Carl's by himself. Carl just does everything by himself and it's amazing the amount of work that he does. We're extremely lucky to have him here in the district. So with that, I'll turn this over to Dr. Johnson.
I'm gonna try real hard to live up to that introduction. Not sure I can, but we'll go for it. Let's see, as Mr. Fullerlove said, I'm Carl Johnson. I like to say I'm proud to serve. I'm happy to serve the Sherard District. As a grad, it has a special place in my heart, always has, and I try to keep that in the forefront of everything I do when I walk into the office every morning, when I leave the office or leave a school every evening. I always try to remember, hey, that's where I come from and it really does mean something to me. So thank you so much for coming this evening. One thing I want to throw out here, I have a couple ladies here tonight. I know Mr. Fullerlove said I'd do it all myself. Trust me, there's a couple ladies here tonight, Becky Baraby and Lindsay Adams. They make sure that everything runs smoothly at the office. So we have the face of Sherard and the business manager here with us tonight and we could not do what we do without them, that's for sure, two top-notch people. So we'll talk a little bit tonight about, we'll talk about students, we'll talk about staff, we'll talk about the facilities, we'll talk about the finances. If at any time you guys have questions, we have a prospectus out there with all kinds of facts and figures, something that I could read only if I was at the desk or at my computer because my eyes are getting old enough now, but there's tons of facts and figures in there. Everybody knows how to get ahold of me, either email me or call me at the district office. If you have any questions with that, I'd be happy to answer and/or discuss any of those things. In addition to calling me or emailing me, I'm oftentimes in the community for community input sessions. I see a couple friendly faces in here from those sessions that we've done in the communities. Want to keep doing those again this year. So if you see anything on social media or our website about, hey, we're gonna be out in the community, come on out. We'll usually have some kind of treats. If nothing else, we'll get you a sugar rush as you're out and about. I don't want to pick up, try clicking with our recorder, that doesn't work. First thing I want to talk about tonight, Sherard students. This is, you know, we're here because of the kids. We do what we do because of the kids. And again, I think that's very important to make sure that everybody keeps at the top of the list, you know? Why are you an educator? Because I want to make a difference for kids. I want to make a difference for families. If you keep that at the top of the list, I think you're always going to be doing the right thing. I'm a firm believer that you might not get it right the first time, but if you make a mistake and you're going 100 miles an hour to make that mistake, I'm gonna work awful hard to help you because that shows that you're trying. So that's definitely a motto that we have at Sherard with our staff is, you know, we're gonna try as hard as we can to help every kid in every way that we can. Having a student-centered approach all the way from the board to the teachers, to the bus drivers, to the custodians, to the superintendent makes a huge difference. Okay? And I think we are kind of the sweet spot as far as the size of a district, that we can really provide awesome services, but still keep things somewhat personalized. Few words to describe our students. These are some things that stick in my mind. You know, they're resilient, they're reliable, they're remarkable, they're ready. I'm not gonna birdwalk very much tonight. I'm gonna try to stick to the facts and figures. But one birdwalk I'm gonna do is I paid for most of my grad school by pouring and finishing concrete. So many of you have probably seen me limp around. That explains a lot of it. But I had the opportunity this summer to take our summer crew of kids that are either seniors or college freshmen, and they learned how to pour concrete with Dr. Johnson because we had a couple bids and it's like, ooh, no way, we're not gonna do that. We've got all these young strapping lads here and I'm gonna teach them on the fly and we're gonna do this. And these four words really described what I saw when I had these kids who never, they'd never done this before, but boy, they were ready and they followed directions. And if I told them to do something different, they did it. And, you know, if I said, okay, let's, you know, on the hop, you're 90 minutes from disaster, they were hustling. So it was really cool to see that little group of guys that were so on top of it and so ready to learn. And they did a remarkable job. So if you ever, when you're buying tickets to a football game or a soccer game this fall, when you walk up to the ticket booth, take a look and see what they did. Or if you have a son or a daughter that throws discus, we have a temporary discus ring out, out back here. So check that out and you can kind of rate the boys on how they did. I'm gonna blame them or give them credit. Either way, I'm done. So. I think it's important when we talk about our kids that we have to understand, they have to be ready for the world. If the world means you're gonna go to work right away, be ready for it. Have the skills that you need. If you're going to take an apprenticeship and go into the trades, that means you need to be ready when you walk out of the high school to be able to do those things. If you want to be successful in college, that means you have to be ready when you walk out of here. And again, I talked about our staff. Those are the things that they're going to try and try and try to make sure that the students are ready to go when they walk out of here. And it just doesn't, you know, it doesn't start and end with the high school, obviously. It's what kind of a background are the kids getting before they get to high school? What are we building on all the way from pre-K at Winola, as I see Ms. Roberts smiling in the crowd, on up to when they walk across that stage and we get to shake their hands at graduation? What have they done here? What have they built upon? What have they relied on their parents as well to make sure that they're going to be ready for that next step of life? Now, when I talk about these things, a lot of times I personalize them because I've got kids from 26 to 17, okay? Tried working on some trigonometry last night at the table. That didn't work out real well, but anyway, nonetheless, last one's a senior. So I personalize these things because I really do see firsthand what it means to have the kids ready to go and what it means when you see those teachers working so hard with kids to make sure that they're ready to go. One of the things that I'll always say is, don't be an eight to three student. That means there's always things to do before school that you can be involved with and Lord knows there's a ton of things after school that you can be involved with. And that means here at the school, we want everybody to be involved in those community organizations, but we want people to know also, we want those students to be involved in extracurriculars. You know, we want them to sing, we want them to play instruments, we want them to be successful athletes and scholars. You can do all kinds of things after three o'clock. So I'm always pushing kids and I'll ask, you know, especially the upperclassmen here at the high school, they'll get these random questions from Dr. Johnson that maybe they weren't quite ready for in the hallway because I want to know, what are you doing? What time do you get out of school? What do you do after school? You know, and they're, you know, why are you going home? You need to be doing this. Do you have a 4.0 GPA? Well, no. Oh, beautiful. I know some teachers that'd be willing to help you out. And pretty soon they realize, cross the hall, you know, stay on the other side so he doesn't talk to me. I'm just kidding. So, but again, we need to make sure that we are encouraging those kids to be all that they can be while they are here and stick around even extra. Our staff is, again, this is what, this is what makes things go, the heartbeat. You know, remember the old Chevy commercial? To lead this off, I want to read some exit interview quotes. We had a number of retirees last year and I did something that's, it's very eye-opening and fun in most cases, to do an exit interview. And I walked in and I talked to these teachers that are retiring, well, not just teachers, but people who are retiring, some of whom had been with the district for nearly 40 years. And I just had a set of five questions that were kind of open-ended and I just wanted to talk and give them a chance to give some feedback. What, what can you tell us after your career here at Sherard? So I'm gonna read a few of the comments. "I was always supported and given a chance. This is a very caring and welcoming district. We have a very solid educational system in Sherard. I would always tell young teachers to apply here. One of the fun things that I get to do is to award the Tiger Talent, the Golden Apple. If you've been to a board meeting before or watched a board meeting, you know what I'm talking about. Those are the exemplary people that we try to award in our district. And we're gonna do another one of those tonight." But several of the people that I talked to on exit interviews, they had received that Tiger Talent Award, that Golden Apple. So I think that those are the people that you want to talk to. Those are the people that you want to learn from as a superintendent to make sure that you're doing the best that you can to make sure we have the best district we can. We are certainly fortunate to have some of the most talented teachers and, and staff in the nation, and I truly believe that. This is my fourth stop as far as fourth district that I've had the privilege to serve. And I, I tell that to people no matter where they go. And I'll run into people in the community, you know, hey, how is it being home? You know, some people that I might not have seen for the last 25 years. How does it feel? What do you think? How's it going? That type of thing. And inevitably, the circle always comes back to teachers and staff. You know, my, my entire family, all my nieces and nephews either went through Sherard or are here now, you know? So it inevitably turns to the teacher that made an impact on them. And they still remember it. You know, and I talk about that every, every fall when we start school, you know, because in, I will always have somebody that will see me over the summertime. Because when you're old and gray like me, you've had thousands of, you know, students over the years. And they will remember something that I've said or something that I've did. And it always blows me away that they make those connections, that they remembered what probably at that time Coach Johnson told them, you know? And it is, it's, it extends to the parents. They too will remember, you know, hey, yeah, I remember what Mr. Miller said. I remember what Ms. Minch said, you know, about my kid and helped him here. And, you know, it's, it's literally a weekly or a monthly thing for me to be able to have those conversations. So it reminds me that the people are here for a reason. You know, they're here to help your kids for a reason. You know, the paraprofessionals, what they do in the classrooms, the teachers, you know, what the, going above and beyond, you know, our food service, our transportation, our mechanics, our maintenance. They're all here first for the kids to make sure that they have what they need. So again, we're very, very fortunate with all the talented and hardworking staff that we have. Let's talk a little bit about facilities. Obviously, over the last two and a half years, this has been one of the things that's certainly at the top of the list. It's a, it's a fun topic. It's demanding. It's challenging, but obviously in the end, it can be very, very rewarding. It is obviously a necessity to make sure that we as a district and a board administration to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that we have the very best facilities that we can offer to our students. I want to quote my predecessor, Mr. Boucher, who had a certain way with words. When I was meeting with him after being hired, this, the snow was still falling, I know that, and I drove out here to Sherard and we were sitting together in his office and we were going to talk about facilities that day because there was a $14 million project that was really gearing up. And he said to me, "I really like being able to have facilities that are so nice. When somebody comes here from another school and then goes home, they feel bad about their school." And if you know Mr. Boucher, you know that he didn't have a mean bone in his body, but boy, that was a great way to put it. "I want people to be jealous of Sherard." And I thought, yeah, I'm okay with that. I like that idea. Let's go ahead and make sure that everybody's jealous of Sherard. And if we want to grow, if we want to make sure that we're the destination, I think we have to continue on that path to make sure that we have the best facilities we can have. You know, this high school was built in 1978. I still have a picture in my office that, right when they were literally starting to move out of the old building, which sat next to where my office is. For a 1978 building, this looks phenomenal. Okay? We've had, you know, the, the school boards have done a great job in making sure the facilities are at the top of the list, making sure that we're keeping up with the facilities and modernizing them where needed. Actually, this auditorium, we're gonna start to move to a little bit better lighting system with LEDs. When you're my size and you have to speak under lights like this, you feel like a rotisserie chicken. LEDs won't give off as much heat. That'll be awesome. But again, a lot of the things I'll talk about tonight are tied to that $14 million construction project. We'll start in Viola, the Winola Grade School. Completely revamped the HVAC systems, replaced it top to bottom. That might not sound like a lot, but Winola was actually, that building is where I started second grade, but it didn't get finished on time. So I started it like right after Christmas in second grade. That was when it was a, everybody thought it was a great idea. Let's not make windows that open because we've got air conditioning. Well, the air conditioning has drastically changed since that time. I won't put a date on it. Just know that I'm old. And it had to be not just replaced, but reworked. We had some fabulous contractors in the area that did some really great things. And now Winola has been, for the last year at least, has been significantly cooler and more comfortable than it has been in the past. Now, part of that, and it ties right into this, and you're gonna see with lighting and ceiling upgrades, that's going to be one of the biggest things that we as a district can do to make sure our facilities look good as soon as you walk in. Okay? We can upgrade LED lights and save some money on power bills, but also the ceiling tiles. And Winola is a good example of that because when you have a building that's humid for so long, those ceiling tiles start to sag a little bit. So it's not just the color and maybe the shape of it, but that's something that I'll come back to again and again for the different buildings, is trying to upgrade our lighting and ceiling so that when you walk in, you know, and you look up, you actually see something, oh, okay, you know, yeah, that looks good. Okay? Sherard Grade School obviously was the, that was the attention grabber over the last couple of years here. Completed windows, replaced some roofing, HVAC, you know, heating and air conditioning additions. The classroom and gym addition was the biggest, again, attention grabber. And we also did some asphalt repairs at Sherard. A couple of them, if you'll notice between the, the school and the fire station, we didn't have any choice. We had to do that because the heavy construction pretty much destroyed the blacktop parking lot. So we had to do some repairs there. But both approaches, if you're dropping kids off at Sherard, you'll immediately know what I'm talking about. You no longer need a four-wheel drive truck to get over those things. Some of the future things we're talking about is, since we changed literally the whole footprint of that building, we need to talk about some landscaping. There's some additional paving that can be done because again, that footprint changed so much. All buildings have a, have that life cycle of roofing. We're gonna have to start talking about that. And then the lighting and the ceilings. If you really want to, and again, as I said, I'll keep coming back to this, but go over and look at the Sherard elementary. Go into the new section and take a look at the lighting and the ceiling tiles. Nobody will laugh at you when you're walking around like this. Okay? And then go to the older part of the building and you can really see what an impact that makes. Unfortunately, that's a pretty big chunk of change, so we're gonna have to make sure that we're planning for the future on those things. But I think literally every building in the district could greatly benefit from that. And I won't even get into the studies on the different light temperatures, shades, et cetera, and what they do for learning. Matherville has new windows, new roofing and some heating and air conditioning additions. A couple of those that are computer-controlled, we're still trying to sort out. That was kind of a late project because we were, that was a casualty of the supply chain setbacks, if you will. So that one finished almost a year beyond anticipation and we're still trying to work out a few of the bugs with the controls, but overall, it's significantly better. And again, Matherville could use some landscaping. There were several trees that the, the pests, I think it was the Emerald ash borers got into and ruined some of the trees. So they've had to come down. So there's, there's some things that we can do outside for curb appeal. The paving is aging, probably original with the building. My predecessor did a phenomenal job of taking care of it, but again, it has a, it has a life cycle. And again, lightings and ceilings there too. And finally, what do we do here at the high school? If you haven't had a chance to see that, it's really incredible. If you've got younger kids and you haven't been up here, but you perhaps were graduates, you remember what it looks like. The hallways look phenomenal. I mean, we actually have modern-looking carpet tiles, you know, color scheme of the school, our colors. Several rooms were renovated, particularly the science rooms. They're pretty awesome, I'm not gonna lie. New lockers, again, the flooring. We're finishing our last roofing project right now. We have one space that still has the rock-based roof on top of it. We're getting rid of that as we speak. Gym two was redone. It's beautiful in there now. And obviously, our new state-of-the-art greenhouse that we were able to have a ribbon cutting on my first year, which was a great opportunity. Our FFA, you can read about some of the things they've done in there. It's really incredible. Let's see. All right, finance. Everybody, every homeowner's favorite part of the tax bill. Talk a little bit about our audit preview. Now, as a, as a public entity in the state of Illinois, we're audited every year. And they, a good way to put it, they descend on our office with about a dozen people and they go through everything. And they do what is called in auditing terms, I always love this, air quotes, they test things. They might pick out an invoice for paper towels in February. And then you have to, they will test to make sure we have followed the processes, both internal and external state law, to make sure that we did everything appropriate to order those, take delivery of them, pay for them, put them in the right spot. They might pick the new driver's ed car. Did you, you know, did you go through the right process to bid that? So the audits that we go through are nothing short of intensive and incredible. Okay? So that's a good thing. Obviously, you know, I'm a taxpayer too. I like that, you know, the, the state of Illinois has those laws to make sure everything is on the up and up and there is somebody keeping an eye on it. Overall, our, and again, so all these statements that'll come out are literally public knowledge that have been checked by other people. I was a social studies teacher, not a math teacher, but these people certainly know their numbers and we post all this on the website as well. Our financial position, for lack of a better word, is awesome, strong. Okay? Our December tax levy, that's when the board and I are working to see what is the tax rate that's going to be set to collect money from property taxes, lack of a better term. Okay? We set that in December. The rates have dropped seven times in eight years. And we have dropped approximately 52 cents in eight years. No one around here can say that. And I know that for sure because I texted all of my superintendent compadres in the area today to double check. Okay? I think from what I found, the closest one is 11 cents higher than us. Okay? Right now, our tax rate, it's on the, I think it's on the last page of your prospectus there. We are about $4.30. I think the closest one is Rockridge at $4.41. So this is real money when you start plugging it in. So it's definitely something to keep an eye on. And I can vouch for the level of detail and attention that the school board puts on this because, you know, this is my third year. This is the, you know, this is the longevity that we're talking about over eight years. So the board has done an incredible job of making sure that they're all in, they're knowledgeable and they're keeping an eye on this. And again, they're, they're great stewards of taxpayer dollars. All these projects that I talked about were predominantly paid for with two funds, or two sources of funding. Bonding was the big one. So literally, we borrowed money against future tax proceeds. And then also the grants. What you'll see is Sherard used one-time money for one-time expenses. I know the news right now is just full of stories about schools that are feeling the pinch because they may have taken one-time money and used it for recurring costs. You know, it, kind of the equivalent of paying your rent with a credit card. It's gonna catch up to you at some point in time. So the board was extremely wise in making sure, okay, what is something that's a one-time expense? Boom, we can pave everything over at the bus garage so that the buses don't take a beating. And it's, you know, we can park, we can make sure that we can work on them outside, et cetera. We can replace a roof that's gonna last for 20 years. You know, when, I think where a lot of districts probably got in trouble is they said, oh, let's hire 30% more staff. Then when that money runs out, what do you do with that staff? You either have to let them go or find that money somewhere else. And I grew up on a farm, so I have that theory of there's 10 years and seven are gonna be okay. And three of them, you better hope you save during those seven. So the Sherard Board did a phenomenal job of making sure that it was, again, one-time expenses with one-time money. The impacts of these grants. Again, I know that these oftentimes will come up when we talk about inflation and different things, but as far as Sherard goes, the benefits were absolutely phenomenal. The board was able to borrow a significant amount of money, approximately 11, 12 million dollars at historically low interest rates. So some of the things that we did right now, we would not be able to do, again, with current interest rates. It just wouldn't happen. Okay? But again, the timing was perfect. And I remember talking to Alan about that conversation was, okay, we've got this pool of money with the grants, but we don't have enough to do the big things on the wish list, but interest rates are rock bottom. The board said, let's do it. And again, I think the facilities speak for themselves. But there were three rounds of what we refer to in the office as COVID money, COVID relief money. Essers, 190,000 was the first batch, almost three-quarters of a million was the second. And then the third one was the big one at over $1.7 million. And again, one-time money was used for one-time expenditures. Talk a little bit about the future. I think there's a variety of things to focus on when we talk about the future. It'll be a little bit like what I just went through with the summary, but I probably want to focus a little bit more on kids and learning versus the other things. The financial pieces, that's, it's not arbitrary, but, and I don't want to say it's autopilot, but it's just minding the path that you're on and making sure that you're doing the right things. You're setting expenses appropriately, you're budgeting for them, and you're trying to control those costs. So there, there's less, it's less arbitrary. Again, it, you set, once you're set on the path, it's a good way to go. Curriculum, however, is always changing. There we go. Some of the things that we're gonna look at continuing, Steve Miller's with us tonight, our curriculum director for K-6. He's already started a lot of these things, but it's not just to snap your fingers and it's done. So there's quite a few things that we're gonna keep working on. The K-6 ELA, English Language Arts, articulation and alignment to make sure that a classroom at Sherard is doing the same thing as a classroom at Winola. What you're doing in second grade logically leads into what you're doing in third grade, et cetera. Believe it or not, when you're talking about English Language Arts, that is much more difficult to align and articulate than it is for, say, math. Because the numbers are what the numbers are. When you get to the liberal arts, well, there's different interpretations is how I look at it. Okay? it, okay? Identifying a new math curriculum to make sure that we have a math curriculum that is going to work for our kids and get them ready for high school. As I said, I got to take a stab at trigonometry last night. The book that I was looking at of my daughter's was copyrighted in 1997. So she had the audacity to look at me and say, well, it's like from your time, right? So you should know this. So I went in the kitchen after that, but anyway, a little sore spot. Grade level alignment is a continual, continual task to make sure that, again, the articulation between grade levels, that we are reaching for what we need to have with those kids, okay? And again, does first grade adequately prepare for second grade, does second grade prepare for third grade, and so on. Again, it's a continual task. Think of it as mowing the yard. It never goes away and it always needs work, okay? This is probably district-wide, identifying ways to create time for that grade level articulation and grade level alignment, I should say, and vertical articulation. We just don't have a lot of time in this district with the structure that we have to be able to work together. Take our Wednesday early outs, for example. Those are phenomenal for work within a building, but if we want to get the Sherard teachers together with the Winola teachers, you've eaten up that extra hour by travel for the most part, okay? Now, yes, you can do some things through Zoom or Google Classroom, Google Meet, but it's not quite the same. We need to start thinking outside the box for the future to determine what it is we can do to get people together. Identifying efficiencies in our school structures and staffing. This is, as I said, I grew up on a farm, so I'm always in the back of my mind thinking, is there another shoe gonna drop? Okay, this is what I'm talking about. We need to make sure that we, as a district, are best aligned to take care of things if the financial chips fall, so to speak, okay? It's been good for quite a while since Illinois passed EBF, Evidence-Based Funding. Schools have been getting a significantly larger check every year and that's been very, very nice. But at some point in time, there's going to be an economic downturn. And again, I've taught through two different ones, okay? And so I know what that means. Taught in good times, taught in bad times, been an administrator in both, and let me tell you, the good times are much better. But are our school structures set up for success? And are there efficiencies in staffing that we can look at? Now, everybody's favorite topic, everybody meaning Dr. Johnson. Screen time. We are not, unlike any other district in the United States, we're kind of starting to face a uncomfortable discussion that we're gonna have to have. What is too much screen time for kids? Everybody, I'm sure, has their own opinion. Everybody, I'm sure, can do their own research. What I can talk about from my point of view is how it impacts the learning environment. What is, some of the questions we need to look at? What's the role of the one-to-one Chromebook policy? I'm old, so I remember the first time that this was a possibility. And what the discussion was is kids will have the world at their fingertips. They'll have all the information they need to know right there. Well, that was before everybody contemplated, can you really sort through those sources? And again, I speak from experience, kids 26 to 17, and I'll scratch my head some days and just look at them and say, you gotta be careful. Don't believe everything you read on the internet because that's what started World War I. Now, thank God my kids are sharp enough to laugh at me and ha, 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 real funny, okay? But, you know, there's a certain amount of truth in that. Oh, really? Is that what started the World War I? Some internet? You know, ha, ha, you've read too much that you're not paying attention to. So critically analyzing text. If you're gonna have kids that have all of that at their fingertips, are they gonna be able to effectively sort it out and identify these sources of information, okay? What does it truly mean? Ask the deeper questions. The most popular one here. To what extent do we allow cell phones? Everybody has an opinion. I know I've worked pretty hard. Mr. Johnson's sitting in the audience here, Associate Principal here at Sherard High School. He's the person that these students probably get to talk to if they can't sort out the cellphone policy as it's written. You know, are we as a district ready to effectively ban them in schools? And yes, I put that up there to kind of get folks' attention. Am I saying I'm ready to ban them? Nope, but I'm saying I'm ready for a conversation, okay? What does that mean? You know, what is too much screen time? Getting back to it, you know? What is face-to-face interaction and what have we lost from it? And again, I was, I was a social studies teacher, so I inevitably look at things through the written word. And I look at today's students, my own children included, and say, how many times have they communicated verbally through Snapchat with something that I had to write? So when the geezers like me are complaining about lack of grammar, you don't know where to put a comma. Where's your capitalization, okay? Either A, they haven't had to do it, or B, the autocorrect has done it for them, or C, it's texting, so you use punctuation and texting, you are old, at least that's what I've got, okay? But I think there can be a detrimental effect with technology sometimes, you know? So again, I'm ready to have these conversations because, again, I want what's best for the kids. I want to make sure that they're getting everything they can out of their education. Now, here's where I have our call to help, our strategic plan. Our strategic plan needs to, the plan itself is awesome. Of the districts I've been at, this is by far the best one, the most intense and the most focused. There's no bird walks whatsoever to this. It's very focused. But we need help in updating it to make sure that we can address the things that we need to address, and for that, we need to make sure that we have people to help out. And I know this is, it's busy and you might not be able to see it, but some of the things that we need to talk about are, we're gonna need a subgroup, if you will, I'll just call them subgroup or subcommittee, to talk about student achievement. What do we mean by a 21st century workforce, okay? How do we train an agile workforce, okay? What's our transformation? How do we move, you know, how do we get to where we want to be? What do we need for infrastructure and to sustain that, okay? And finally, how do we most effectively tell the Sherard story? And you can see some of the outcomes, you know, for student achievement. We need to sustain an environment where students can live, learn, and play while allowing them to achieve wherever life takes them, similar to what I talked about at the beginning. Down at the bottom, one of my favorite ones, tell the Sherard story. Increase communication with stakeholders, community, and parents. I oftentimes say that when people are looking around, I want to make sure that they, if they don't live in Sherard districts, excuse me, the Sherard district, they're sick of hearing about it, okay? Maybe I took a little hint from Alan on those things. To accomplish this, we're going to, the Board of Education this fall is going to start focusing on some of the goals and some of the individual outcomes so that we can look at, you know, are we aiming in the right direction? And what do we have to tweak to make sure we have what we need? Community involvement. It's the parents who really need to voice their concerns or their ideas. What do you want? What do you need? I came up with some amazing feedback when I was doing the community meetings, but I'll be honest with you, it was pretty few and far between. I didn't talk to a lot of people. I enjoyed the conversations I had, but I was a little bit optimistic. I thought if I'd roll into the Viola Fire Department, there'd be 20 people there to talk to me, and there wasn't. If I was in Matherville, there might be a couple dozen people that would like to chat about some things, and there wasn't. So two things happened. I got to talk to a few people pretty closely and listen, and I ate a lot of those Old Town Cookies because nobody else was there. So when we're asking for that feedback, when we're asking for help, we're literally going to come and find you and sign you up for things. So now's the time to avoid eye contact if you don't want in on it, okay? Best practices say that when we have these subcommittees, you're probably going to look around, you're gonna have parents, you probably have a board member, and you'll probably have an administrator, and at least one or two teachers on each of those things. And people will be able to pick, you know, what are you passionate about? Okay, well, you're a recruiter, okay? I know what it takes to look for the right skills, so I can pass that on to kids to see what do we need for an agile workforce. And again, I think it has to always center on, we need to make sure that we're taking the proper steps as educators to make sure the kids have what they need for life. And I already warned you that we're going to be reaching out. Social media, webpage, emails, my friendly phone calls, we're gonna cast a wide net and make sure that we get a lot of people that are gonna be able to help us work through these things. Concerns. Not worries yet, but just concerns, some things that we need to look at, okay? Number one, we are like every district in the United States right now. If you meet a school superintendent like me, no matter the size of the district, no matter the location, that says, I'm not worried about an educator shortage, they're either not really with it or they're lying to you. Because we cannot look at this country and see the amount of teachers that came out 1995 of college versus what's coming out now and say, everything's okay, okay? We, as a country, and starting at this district, have to make sure that we are doing what we can to attract youngsters, I'll call them, to this profession, okay? Scheduling and transportation. We have a huge school district geographically, okay? And we run two bus routes to make sure that things are pretty good for parents and pretty good for kids, okay? We've worked hard to get as efficient as we can with that system. But again, back to number one, we're forever struggling to find bus drivers, okay? And our bus drivers get to drive relatively new air-conditioned buses, like the other superintendents in the area make fun of me about that type of thing. I mean, they're jealous, which is fine, but we need to worry about that. Interest rates. Interest rates at some point in time are going to come back down, which means we, as a community, the school board, are going to start to be able to look at, what are some big things that we would like to do? I would not want to be the school district who has to look to borrow money right now. You know, same thing as trying to refinance a house right now. Probably not very much fun, okay? And then finally, our levy rates. Our levy rates, as I said, have dropped consistently over the last eight years, and that is something that we are probably approaching the basement, if you will, okay? There's probably not much lower that we can drop those. So I know the board, I pride myself, the board prides themselves with making sure that we take what we need. Because when we're working through that levy and you see legally, here's what you're able to collect, Sherard never approaches that number, okay? If anybody ever wants to have a real riveting financial discussion with me, stop by and I'll show you the numbers that I'm actually talking about, okay? It was bad memory. Energy efficiencies, thank you, Aaron. When I talked about all the lighting and the ceiling tiles, if we can update our lighting, obviously, that doesn't, that's not just good for the kids, it's good for the pocketbook. We can save some money with that. We have a reminder out back. Our wind turbine is of the age, and if you know anything about those, they're almost entirely hydraulic once the wind starts spinning it. I know that's very technical, wind spinning it, okay? If it's entirely hydraulic, that means at 20 years old, it's going to leak. And leak it does, well, it's just like your car. When the oil leaks out, it shuts down before something really bad happens, okay? There's one crew in this part of the country that can work on that. And they're the ones that service that massive field out there in Henry County, all the way from the other side of Kewaunee up till Alpha. If you've ever driven on 74 at night, you know what I'm talking about, okay? So for those guys to drop everything and come to Sherard to work on our turbine, the timing has to be right, okay? But again, that's a reminder of what can we do for energy efficiencies? You know, do we need to look at that turbine in terms of what does it mean to us right now versus what is its value to us right now? I know a field that my brother farms north of Viola, there's a big solar project going in there right now. You know, are those some things that we need to start talking about? There's all kinds of possibilities. And again, I just, I want to give that shout out to the board that they are willing to look at these things and willing to talk about these things to see what we can do that's best for our taxpayers and for our kids, okay? All right. I would say, are there any questions? But since we're at a board meeting, I'll just thank everybody for coming tonight. We do have a couple other things that we will do in this room, so I invite everybody to sit tight. And I will have Ms. Elliott come up front here. And one of the things that I talked about is the Tiger Talent Award. The Tiger Talent Award, actually, and this is a true story, was a brainstorm of Dr. Johnson when I was recovering from hip surgery. And when you're sitting there and you don't have a lot going on and you have a lot of time to sit and think, what, you know, coming into a new job, what are we gonna do? Well, positive recognition is one of the most powerful things that any organization can do. So we wanted to make sure that we were recognizing all of our very positive people. And the name that was ascribed to this, I'll get out of the way so the folks can work here, was Tiger Talent. And long story short, what the Tiger Talent Award is, is if I, as a superintendent, am looking at a teacher to hire and I really want them to come to the district, to whom am I gonna take them and introduce them? I want people who, as soon as they start talking to this person, they're like, I want to teach with them. This is the district I want to be in because this person is awesome, okay? Literally, the people that sell our district for us, so that's all that I would have to do. And in addition to that, this award, you get this lovely little inscribed Sherard bell that says Tiger Talent Dedication Award. And yes, it actually rings, and I know most recipients of this will walk by their colleagues ringing it in their face, which is perfectly acceptable for this award. But without further ado, I will turn it over and you guys can learn more about the Tiger Talent winner.
Bill Hamis. Well, what can we say about the man other than that he is so very deserving of this Tiger Talent Award? Bill, along with his colleagues, Mr. Raski and now Ms. Franks, have single-handedly brought life back into our FFA program with the expanding of courses, offering opportunities outside of school, bringing volunteerism into the program. Bill has that fatherly and grandfatherly approach at holding the line, holding kids accountable for their work while also building that positive rapport, relationship.
There's just a special connection with Mr. Hamis that each student has.
Everyone kind of goes to him for advice on anything, whether it's related or not. He deeply cares about the kids. I know him as a colleague and as a parent with my child being in FFA. We weren't a farm family necessarily. We don't think that a lot of the parents that have kids in FFA, you know, they may not get to interact with him as much as I do, being on the colleague side also. He's a one in a million and we're very lucky to have him.
He has helped me since my freshman year, honestly. He's helped so many kids through his classes, through FFA, in so many different ways. He always wants to provide them with many opportunities. That's just what makes him a great teacher and a great person. I'm just super grateful to have him as my ad teacher and my advisor.
Mr. Hamis, I will never be able to tell you enough how grateful I am for you. My mom always told me that there is one teacher in everyone's life who changes their life forever. You are that teacher.
Yeah, I'd definitely say he's been a mentor for me. We started here at the same time, but like I said, he retired from a teaching career and I was starting my teaching career when we both started here. It's just been invaluable to have somebody with that much experience to bounce ideas off of and see how they do things. Awesome to have somebody like him right next door for my whole teaching career so far. Exceeding expectations. I mean, he spends more hours here than I think a lot of people realize he's here crazy early. He stays way late a lot of nights, especially with sports judging team, a lot of FFA stuff we have going on.
He wants to make a connection with every student.
I've really been fortunate to be able to learn underneath of him so much.
I've really been fortunate to be able to learn underneath of him so much.
I keep telling him that he still has 35 years left in him until I'm ready to retire. So, I don't know if he's on board, but I've been trying really hard.
He's definitely not a teacher, he's just here because he has to be. He's here because he cares about the kids. And this is his ninth year here at Sherard after retiring from another school and deciding he wasn't done working with kids.
His happiness, he is always, every time he sees a kid, always happy, greets them, make sure that they're always included. He likes to push them, he knows what they are capable of doing. So just really making sure that they get to that next level.
It's one of the reasons I love Sherard is because of our ag program and Hamis just makes it extra special and I'll always remember it for that.
Other than being an Iowa State fan, we've built a very collaborative relationship. I consider him a dear friend.
I feel like if I didn't join FFA, I don't think I'd be in the same place that I am now.
We've been to state conventions, it was down in Springfield. I've also been to national conventions in Indianapolis. I've been there the past two years. Each time I've went, it is a lot of fun.
The Sherard FFA chapter has really flourished underneath of his leadership. He has a lot of dedication to student development along with his passion for agriculture. It's truly inspired myself, other students, colleagues.
Years ago, I came to Mr. Hamis with an idea for an FFA event where I had a livestock feeding clinic. And it definitely helped me grow to be where I am right now.
Hello, I'm Mr. Hamis. I'm one of the ag ed instructors, FFA advisors here at Sherard High School. And for those students that I'm going to be seeing next year, I can't wait for you to get here. For those that are coming in to intro to ag class, I am so looking forward to you being in my class, being part of the FFA and getting started on your journey in high school.
How Mr. Hamis has been such a great role model for me. I have really been contemplating actually being, going to school to be an actual ag teacher just for, you know, kind of repay him for, you know, he's helped me out a lot the past four years and he's meant a lot to me. And if I could be half the man he is, I think I'd be a really great man.
When I first joined FFA, he kind of, he kind of like put stuff in my head, like about the future and what you could be if you joined the organization and do certain things.
He brings so much to not only our school, our district, our community, but really the state. And now they've received national awards as well too. And that's largely in thanks to Bill Hamis.
There was the farm course judging team. He would take them down to Black Hawk East in Kewaunee to meet with their team down there. And there were times they weren't getting home until after nine o'clock at night. He had been teaching all day.
I was super stressed out competing at a national level, of course. He was always there helping me, telling me that I'm, he calls me a rock star every time he sees me.
And so, congratulations, Bill. You are very deserving of this Tiger Talent Award. I look forward to signing you to that five-year contract here very soon. Congratulations, buddy. Go Hawks!
He knows how much he means to our family.
Go Iowa State!
From where I am now because of the stuff that he said and the stuff that he's provided.
He's a good friend and it's nice to have him working so closely.
Thank you, Hamis, for helping me want to pursue a career in agriculture and drawing my love for agriculture.
And Mr. Hamis, I just want to say thank you for everything in the past four years of you being at Sherard High School.
Really, the FFA has brought me happiness, joy. I wouldn't have been able to sing at an FFA state convention if it wasn't for joining. So, I thank you for everything that you've done. You mean the most to every single one of us.
I would not have found my love for agriculture if I had not been for you, nor would I be pursuing a career as an ag teacher. Thank you for showing me that hard work pays off and it never got up easily. I know there are no other teachers out there like you, but one day I hope to be half the teacher you are and I know that I'll be doing something right. You truly are a mentor, leader, and inspiration. I will always remember what you taught me, both about agriculture and about life.
We have a secret handshake we do every morning to start off the day.
Uh, can you why? No, I eat.
I just can't put words, it's a little bit wasted. We write each other letters in the summer just to stay in touch. Actually, I have a picture of him above my bed, so it's more like... It just helps me get out of bed. I hope he walks me down the aisle.
Without further ado, let's welcome Mr. Hamis down front to collect his golden apple. A person I know no one deserves it more than he does, Bill Hamis. I remember we've never had a crowd like this for a golden apple, for a Tiger Talent Award. And if you notice when Bill walked down, he had that look in his eye like, uh, it wouldn't come if I knew these people were going to come and cheer for me, wouldn't happen. But I can't say enough good things about Bill. I enjoy talking to him, as I mentioned, farm background. It's always interesting to hear what he has to say. No one goes above and beyond as much as Bill does. He's built this ag program into a juggernaut. I mean, it literally is incredible, the connections that he makes, the things, I guess for any taxpayer, the things that he gets us just by the force of his personality and effort is incredible. And I say that as the guy who gets to see the bottom line in their ag fundraising account. It's amazing what he gets the community to do, what he gets the kids to do. It's incredible and we're all so much better for it. We measure the food that Bill's ag program grows and gives away in the greenhouse in tons. It is just absolutely incredible to have a person like this, especially through the second career, right? And again, I believe Ms. Franks said, retirement normally is 35 years of service, so I know you're on your way. I get one more round of applause from Mr. Hamis. In the back wave here, and if you're Mr. Hamis's family. Students and their former students, colleagues and parents. Again, the board can back this up, we've never had a crowd like this before. It's absolutely incredible. Thank you all for coming out to honor Bill and thank you for sharing him with us. It's really been something great and I hope he decides to stay for a long, long time. So, thank you, Bill, we appreciate you. Okay, now our order of events will be, we will briefly adjourn to reconvene in the library for the bulk of our meeting. I can promise you that it will be nowhere near as exciting as the first half of the meeting, but you are still all welcome to stay if you would like in the library, which is leave here and go straight down the hall. Do not pass, or pass the exit, keep walking, it'll be on your left. Thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you all for those who came back to join us for the rest of our board meeting. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda, is there any change to the agenda, Dr. Johnson?
No, sir.
That'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mrs. Lyons, seconded by Mr. Dominic, to adopt the agenda as presented. Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber? Mr. Hound?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving over to recognition of members of the audience. We had no one sign up, so moving over to 7.01 consent agenda items. I do want to make reference to bend, 7.10 amended board meeting. We are changing our September 25th meeting, so next month, we're going a week later because Dr. Johnson's going to be presenting the budget tonight and has to be on display for 30 days. So, that's why we're shifting that. And then we're also, same type of thing for the end of the budget hearing in June 25th. So, those are the two days we're changing, so just making note of that in the consent agenda. Is there any other questions on the consent agenda items? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Helm, seconded by Mr. Dominic, to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, over to you, Dr. Johnson.
Okay, you'll see in your board packet online that you have multiple documents. We have some SDS style documents. Let me hold one up for display here. SDS documents, this format, that breaks down the nitty-gritty into each individual line item, okay? And then the other one we have is the state, handy-dandy state budget format right here, okay? The tentative budget again has to remain on display for 30 days. As Mr. Fullerlove said, that's why we had to move the June meeting back to make sure that we had that required 30 days. A few words about this budget. I talked with a few of you briefly this week. One of the things that was discussed with me when I came in was we need to start making sure that we are paying down some fund balances. And if everybody saved their prospectus from in the auditorium, that last, those last couple pages, that's a pretty good way to talk about what we're looking at. That would be attachment two for anybody in the audience that wants to look at it. Attachment two, it's just kind of real slick to see the trends, which explains why we're looking at a deficit budget. Now, nine times out of 10, when you say, we're looking at a deficit budget, start to lose your mind, oh, expenses are outpacing revenues. This is by design, okay? One of the things that we talked about when I came in as superintendent was we want to start paying down the cash reserves, the fund balances, because you only have to carry so much, so many days of operating cash on hand. And there's a variety of different numbers for the different funds we have. But realistically, when you look at it, you can see that our cash reserves right now are sitting at over $12 million. We could come close to running a full year on cash reserves. Now, again, you know, remember the preparing for bad times with good times, and I think that's what the district has really done. But we've also been able to lower property tax rates so that if anybody's property tax went up, it was simply because the value of your property was appreciating, okay? That is also listed at the bottom there of that attachment two, if anybody wants the longevity piece of it, okay? So, right now, our fund balances were approximately $8 million. In the ed fund, over a million dollars in the O and M fund, operation and maintenance, 1.2 in transportation. Then we get down to the TORT fund. The TORT fund, the primary expenditures for TORT are our insurance and our legal bills. And I'm happy to say that that's not low because of legal bills. That's low because of insurance rates literally exploding. The TORT fund is one that the auditors don't want you carrying a big fund balance in very often, okay? So, the Sherard district, if you look back through past audits and past budgets, have done a very good job of keeping that particular fund balance relatively low. The problem is, is when you get hit with 40% increases on things like insurance, that fund is pretty much depleted, okay? So, one of the things that we are going to do is a inter-fund loan, okay? That will take $300,000 from the ed fund and put into the TORT fund, okay? So, when you see a deficit budget, that's a piece of it that we have to make sure that we talk about, okay? Now, the budget itself, again, this is by design. This isn't because somebody made a mistake. Right now, we are looking at approximately an $804,000 budget deficit for the ed fund, okay? That's a $14.6 million budget. So, when you look at $800,000, it does shrink a little bit. But again, that is by design to help pay down the fund balances. Now, I referred multiple times to the interest rates in the presentation in the auditorium. One of the thing about our interest rates is, bless you, we had, two years ago, we were looking at $20,000 to $25,000 a year in interest income. Last year, it was north of $600,000, okay? So, even though we had a budget that was geared towards making sure that we're paying down these fund balances and running a deficit budget, the last two years, they haven't turned out to be deficit budgets because of the interest income and the investments, okay? But again, this year, we have, with the tax levy that we designed last year and the budgeting now in the new contract, we are scheduled to have an $800,000 deficit in the ed fund. Now, I know many of you've heard me talk about the magic box on the front of the state form, the little blue box in the top corner. That is, the key thing there is it says unbalanced budget. However, a deficit reduction plan is not required at this time. There's two reasons for that. Number one, the percentage of our deficit spending, our overage, is not high enough to trigger that deficit reduction plan. And then again, our fund balances are healthy enough, it's not triggering a deficit reduction plan, okay? I've spouted off a lot of information right there. Questions on the ed fund piece, which is obviously the bulk of it?
Do you see this as only like a one-year thing to draw them down a little bit? Or are we going to be, and how far, how low are we going to go?
For example, the last two years, we've went up, we went up about $750,000 the year before last. And then we went, or excuse me, we went up about $900,000 the year before last and then about $750,000 this past year. I think if we can do two years of reducing the cash balances, unbalanced budgets, if you will, deficit spending for two years, I think we can bring those back down to about the $10 million level for the ed fund. Or, I should say, the overall district balances. Because if we had an overall district cash balance of $10 million, we're still sitting good financially.
Does doing that impact our financial rating?
We would not let it get low enough to impact the financial rating, no. And again, it's, as the board has reduced the tax rates and other districts around us look at us with envy, I'm happy to say. I referred to in the presentation that we're probably reaching the basement for that. So, for example, neighboring school district that I talked to today is in the approximately $4.50 range for taxes, we're at $4.30, okay? One of our neighboring districts on the other side is at $4.41, we're at $4.30, okay? So, again, it's the trending of what have we done with staffing? What have we done with spending to make sure that we're in a solid place? So, you know, this is something that would not take... We, to be blunt, we leave a lot of money on the table when it comes time for the levy legally in the interest of taxpayers because we've taken what we've needed. So, that is something that if we, if somebody's nervous about this, it would not be hard to turn this around a little bit with the tax levy this year.
Any other questions on that?
As far as the bond money, have we spent most of the money from the bonds that pretty much?
Almost all of it. And we're going to be, the roofing project right now is about $334,000. So, that'll, that should pretty well clean it up, so. And we just made sure we spent all the bond money first and then kept the capital funds that were continuing to come in.
Right.
So, since that bond was earmarked for other things, we couldn't use it for a new junior year roof.
Is there like a list of things you'd like to see done, like facilities-wise or anything? Kind of, is that something we should work on for...
Definitely, I think that's a key part of the strategic plan to make sure that we're doing that. And I know people probably got tired of me hearing me talk about lighting and ceilings, but that would really be a great for the appeal of inside the building, the look, and it's unfortunately, it's going to be pretty expensive to be able to do that. the look, and it's, unfortunately, it's gonna be pretty expensive to be able to do that.
One thing I did notice in the proposed budget was the electricity between the different schools for Winola was a lot higher proposed, and for building size and everything, I'm just not exactly sure what that would be. I have no doubt that that's what it is from last year and everything, but I'm just kinda curious if, tried to dive into that at all, if that's right.
No, and theoretically, it should've been better, because we had new air conditioning. But I know there were, and I, I don't know if this has anything to do with it, there were significant problems with power outages in Viola and surges, cooked a few of our items out there, including new air conditioners, so.
I don't know how hard it'd be to pull, like, the past couple of years' worth of bills for, for that. I mean, I'd certainly be able to, I guess I've already created spreadsheets and stuff, that I could input some numbers and see if I could try to find anything, any reasons why.
We certainly pulled bills, and Mid-American, I know you can just do, you can go online and get it, I'm not sure about Ameren.
Yeah.
Can we do the same thing with Ameren? Okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
So this deficit, though, is just, you know, this one year, just to balance out?
One to two years, just to drive down their funds? Because we, we keep making money each year to keep them, so.
Just to make sure our education fund doesn't affect need teachers or staff numbers or anything.
And again, on the back of that handout, the, the staffing is going to be determined by enrollment numbers. And again, that's a luxury that we have in this district, is staffing will be determined by enrollment numbers, not budget.
Okay.
We would, we would, because we have so much ceiling on the levy, I'm not saying I wouldn't wanna tell the taxpayers, "We're gonna recoup a bunch of money," no. But because we have such a high ceiling on it, we control the destiny with looking at what the enrollment is versus what the staffing is, versus letting the budget dictate staffing, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
No pink slips for financial reasons.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, so we got adopted. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the tentative budget as presented.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mrs. Lyon, seconded by Mr. Kaber, to approve the tentative budget as presented. Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, next item up for bid, we have our remote learning plan. Now, I know this, at, at first, when people hear remote learning, the first thing they think of is snow day, and the second thing they probably think of is pandemic. Nope, different, different language. We have our associate principal from the high school, Mr. Johnson, with us tonight. He put the vast majority of this together, once the board is able to take a look at it. This literally is just a colorful way to put into action what we already have in board policy. Board policy six colon one-eighty-five allows the district to be able to do these things. This is for essentially students who need something that would be outside of placement within the building. Again, we're a small district, we don't have a lot of options if kids are not having success in this building, even in the tier-three room. This would be an opportunity for remote learning at home, and as you look through the presentation, the PowerPoint, which again, will be put on the website, you see that what, it would take a meeting with, a meeting of the minds, if you will, everyone has to agree that this is the best path, okay? There are certain extraordinary circumstances where the district would be able to say, "This is the best path." I know we can't all agree, but this is the best path, for example, to avoid things like an expulsion. Because if there are some extreme behavior issues, we need to be able to deal with those things in a constructive manner before it gets to the level of expulsion. This plan would also apply technically, if a student were to come before the board with expulsion, this would be an opportunity for them to perhaps hold that in abeyance and say, "If you can successfully complete this, we will have another meeting and see where you stand." Mr. Johnson, did I leave anything out?
Yeah, I mean, those are some of the primary reasons. You might also use it for students that are dealing with significant, significant mental health issues, where attending school on a regular basis has become a challenge, and then a lot of times, truancy might get involved as well when those happen, so this could be kind of a bridge between those two, where we can still provide services to that student, try to keep them on track, but then also, you know, they can adjust how they need to in a home setting as well. So I mean, those would be big ones, and then sometimes, you know, attendance, for whatever reason might happen, where a student in their, in their living situation might change very drastically, depending on where the parents are at and things like that, that's another way for us to provide education for our students in an alternative format that would best suit them as well. So, 21st century, there's a lot of different needs, this just gives us more tools in, in our toolbox, so to say, the best dressed, dressed thing.
Would that also include, like, if there are medical needs that...
Yep, absolutely. So that, that would be probably one of the most common reasons right now that we do go to that plan, is that there could be some type of medical situation where typically, we've called that home damage truck, but it'd be kind of falling under the same, same plans now.
And by not, by giving a kid access, a student access to this, as opposed to the home bound, they're gonna get more than that five hours, as required by law, so.
Is this offered just high school?
Technically, it covers the district, but there would be significant challenges to make sure we address with parents, if it were for a younger kid. I would say, if it's a younger kid, parents are probably gonna be asking for it, if it's an older kid, we're gonna be working together with the parents to find the best placement.
Gotcha.
How many students do we typically have?
Under ten at any given time. So yeah, it's, it's really kind of a small number, but they're very delicate situations that consume a lot of time and resources. So just a, a plan that's in place, that we can point to right away, would kind of expedite the process, instead of, "Well, I don't know, you know, what can we do, what can we not do," type thing.
I like it. Is there a teacher that is dedicated to this program, or how is the staff...
So they're, depending on the student's needs, how we've handled it in the past, is a couple different ways. Ms. Boris, who's our credit recovery teacher, she is well-versed in Plato, and so a lot of times, that's kind of our online system that we use for students that, that are tier recover credits for if they go homebound. So a lot of times, she might be willing to work, but in a, a situation that's, where the student might need more support, then a lot of times, we offer substitute pay, or, you know, additional pay for teachers that would provide tutoring for the, for the student as well, for what they need. So, some students will get it, you know, like, we had one girl, she was just essentially homeless and living in a teen, so transportation was a problem since her senior year. So we just needed to try to give her the resources we need, she could do it on her own, but we just needed to give her some more resources. Other students, they need that, that teacher to guide them through it as well, so. But we work both ways, really try to accommodate for what, what is the best of the student, for the student.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the remote learning plan corresponding with board policy six, one, one-eighty-five.
So moved.
I'll second.
A motion was made by Mr. Dominic, seconded by Mrs. Lyon, to approve the remote learning plan. Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The last item I have for you tonight, this is the district property that is straight west of our office, that we've talked about several times. Didn't have the legal documents in time to have them signed at the last meeting, so we put them on this one. This will be the easement, so that the village can build their shed extending north, I believe. I'm not, Dan, I'm not sure, if you have any inside scoop for me, but I know that the village has been very good to us, as we've, as we've needed things, and this is one thing that is gonna give us a little bit less grass to mow. Marine Riggs from Churchill and Churchill's, who I've talked to about this, so.
And we talked about it before, any new questions? Yes, I'll, I'll make sure it's on, Becky. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the district property easement to Village of Sherard as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Kaber, seconded by Mr. Dominic, to approve the district property easement to the Village of Sherard as presented. Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland? Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Helm? Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, for communication correspondence, I realized we didn't do the good news report at the beginning, so I'm gonna drop it in here.
Oh no, I got to take care of all the, in the prospectus.
No, didn't we do a STV good news report?
Did Kayla?
Yeah. Yeah, you didn't do it all.
I shut her off too quick.
Yeah, I can't do this, Kayla, because I don't have your password.
Don't share your password, Steve's here.
Think I'll take a minute to settle?
No, she's got, she's got it, ready to go. Do I? Okay, go ahead, because she's...
Uh, just to update some things on Boss Ed, we have our new director in place, and that, a lot of kudos at the meeting, just how great Kathy is doing for Boss Ed, and that, so she's a great addition. She's come in and done some new things already. One thing that one of the principals mentioned was, at the Phoenix Center, they have a hard time getting their lunch in, and so Kathy's been taking a little trolley cart around with pizza and chocolates and stuff, just to make a positive attitude. She had a great opening day. They brought in Kirk Weisler, but I guess he changed, he's German, something about him changing the pronunciation of his name. But he is the author of a book called The Dog Poop Initiative, and basically, it's about, sounded like not, leadership and not putting up with crap anymore, moving on, and that. So, a couple people were there, just to, just to give kudos of just the transformation at Boss Ed that's happening. She also mentioned, a good thing, something about some money coming back to the districts that you might not know yet, having to do with the orphanage claims.
Yes, Lindsay and I were just talking about that.
So money will be distributed shortly to different districts.
Don't ever get that excited when you're talking about orphan, orphans.
I'm talking about money. I mean, I love them as much as anybody, I'm just...
So...
I watched Annie three times last week.
So it was just a nice, refreshing meeting, but she's much more talkative than the last director, so the meetings are not as quick.
Oh, good.
You know the feeling, don't you?
Serves you right.
Huh?
I said, "You know the feeling, don't you?"
Uh-huh, yeah. So it was a refreshing meeting, and that, I think Boss Ed is gonna see some great improvements.
Agreed.
Awesome. Thank you, Sue. Okay, Kayla.
From the Sherard's Good News Report, I'm Kevin Vermaier.
And I'm Adeline Thomas.
Sherard Grade School had a fantastic start to the school year. Unpack Your Backpack Night was a huge success, with tons of smiles and hugs. Thanks to everyone who came out.
We also had a blast at our PBIS kickoff assembly in the new gym. Students and staff learned about school procedures, incentives, and goals for the year. We even recited the Sherard Tiger motto.
The Sherard Grade PTO is already hard at work, fundraising for new playground equipment. Please reach out to them for more information or to support their awesome cause.
Winola Grade School had a great first day of school. We started with a pledge of allegiance and staff introductions. We're all excited for a wonderful year. We also learned about school procedures at our expectation stations.
Our Backpack Night was a huge success. Families dropped off supplies and explored the building. It was a great way for students to meet their teachers and feel less nervous about the first day.
Our conference room looks brand-new. We used funds from participating in U.S. Department of Education surveys to update it. It's a great space for families and staff to meet and work together.
We celebrated our first week with a fun day of activities, including drawing, music, team-building, and physical activities. We even had popsicles. It was a great way to kick off the new year.
Matherville Intermediate also had a great week. It was awesome seeing returning sixth graders and welcoming new students.
Save the date, Grandparents' Day is back on September tenth. Bring a grandparents or a special friend to enjoy breakfast from seven-thirty to eight a.m.
Yearbooks are available for purchase in the office for fourteen-fifty. Get yours before they are gone.
We're also hosting a family night in the fall with Turkey Bingo. Donate prizes or snacks to help make it a success.
Mrs. Theaterquise is encouraging students to join the beginning band. The high school band even came to perform for us.
We're already seeing lots of students playing volleyball after school. It's great to see so much enthusiasm.
Sherard Junior High is off and running. After successful seventh-grade orientation night, all students were ready to begin the twenty-four, twenty-five school marathon. The students' first sprint off the line involved successful completion of math testing.
Along the night, along the next leg, students have shown a desire to be involved, which includes high numbers of students signing up for fall extracurricular activities, including cross-country, football, girls' basketball, cheerleading, and student council. We are excited about the start of the school year and are looking forward to a great month of competition.
New this year, the Sherard Junior High and High School Band and Choir are excited to announce they will be hosting the first annual one-day mattress fundraiser on Saturday, September seventh, from ten a.m. to five p.m.
For one day only, Sherard High School students will be transformed into a mattress showroom. No, not students, the school.
SHS recognized seventy-eight students at our academic achievement ceremony, August sixteenth, for their academic success in the second semester of the twenty-three to twenty-four school year. Students received white ice cream and a certificate for their achievements.
In the act department, students have harvested one-thousand-one-hundred-and-five pounds of produce for local pantries and counting. So far, they have harvested and shared jalapenos, banana peppers, and sweet corn.
Now, over to the green screen with information on our Tiger calendar.
Fall sports are up and running. Be sure to check your Tiger calendar to help support our student athletes. Not sure how to find it? Scan the QR code to see where you can find building calendars as well as athletic events. Now back to the studio with Kevin and Adeline.
Thanks everyone for your, for, oh. Run that back, run that back, run that back, slow down. Thanks everyone for your, for... Thanks everyone for watching this week's Sherard Tigers Good News Report. We'll see you next time.
Sherard's Good News Report.
Okay. Here we go. Okay. Okay, that's reassuring, I noticed. Talking, talking, is it working? I'm talking, I don't know. Sherard Grade School, I, I, oh boy, I can't, no, I, I lied, I can't read it.
You can find me in the space between two miles country.
What?
I'm just sending this to the world.
Yay.
Who says this? Who says this? Who says this?
That's all recorded.
Good to see they're starting the wrong foot editing.
Yeah.
Yep. So, last one for communication correspondence is, looking, we talked about wanting to do a tour of our Buildings and Ground Committee as a committee of the whole, looking at Tuesday the 27th, or Wednesday the 28th, so check our calendars real quick, see if we can lock in a date there.
What time are we doing it? I'm open.
Yeah. 27th or 28th, so.
I can do small groups, I can do individual, it doesn't matter.
I accidentally signed up to coach soccer two nights, not just one.
You did what?
I accidentally signed up to coach soccer on Tuesday and Thursdays, I thought we just, just on Thursdays, so I like the Wednesday.
Bless yourself.
What level of soccer age group?
Julius, so forth.
Bumblebee Soccer.
And you said, so you said you liked Wednesday better?
Tuesday worked better for me.
Yeah, I like Tuesday.
I did that, too.
Tuesdays.
How late, or what are we thinking?
Literally, it's around your schedule, and if, if somebody can't make it one of those nights, just call me and we'll take a ride and check it out anytime.
I think I'd rather Tuesday.
I think I'm flexible, so.
But I could do either.
Let's try to do Tuesday, because Tuesday worked better for you guys, so.
Thursday, Matt has a surgery.
And then we'll go on another special magic ride, Carl on the magic bus.
Yes.
Okay, we'll set that, you wanna say 5? So 27th, Tuesday, 27th at 5.
All right, we'll send everybody a calendar invite.
Okay.
And we're congregating where?
It's meet at the district office, and then we can take a mini bus.
Okay, anybody else had anything for communication and correspondence?
I don't know if I, okay, they mentioned yearbooks. When do senior, past seniors pick up yearbooks, do I know?
I don't think they're quite in yet.
Okay, just curious, I'm like, do they notify?
Yeah.
The kids or?
Well, I think it's black, well, we'll be letting everybody know.
An email?
Usually have email.
Okay, thank you. I'm like, now that she's not in school, I'm like, how do I get this yearbook?
Spent this way for the longest time.
Yeah. She'd be like, Mom!
It's usually the fall.
Okay, curious, thank you, sorry.
Carl, will you have the principals, like, give a list of anything they want us to look at specifically while?
It's a loaded question. We might end up with a wish list. Casey looking at you.
Casey has the newest, shiniest things.
It's like an avalanche, it's like an avalanche, once it starts, it's out of control.
Casey got $6 million, she's good for a while.
Okay, there you go, guys, straight from the top. Get your wish list out for me to say no, I mean, for us to look at.
But just, you know, I, I think about when, when we were going through the building of Sherard, and how particular you were, looking every inch of that building, and that, looking at other parts of my life, and how much more particular you were, and how overlooked other places get sometimes, and that. So I do appreciate, like I said, your little pieces of tape, here's a dot, here's a, and that, just, it really was.
There was.
Yeah.
You had those contractors scared.
I see that in another life of mine, but it's not happening. So, I appreciate that.
I don't know, it's not very close with that. Is the internet not necessarily working in the new way, the way that it should be?
It's up right now. We've been battling with some appointments and things, and it's not, you know, I've been having a hard time, but we're very close, it's up right now.
Okay.
Anybody else, why we're, why we're going?
No.
Get it all out?
I don't know.
Good? Good? Okay. Future agenda items, please. Okay, anything else you guys want to add to it?
Yeah, Matherville Playground. You guys tried to go, right?
Huh?
Was that the metal playground? The metal slide was a Matherville one?
No, no, well, there is no slide.
It looks like. Builds character, it burns their butt.
If you could reach it, it might. We have one for the trees. It leaves a lot to be desired. If you walked around the backside of that building, you would not, it doesn't belong, I guess, like.
Doesn't match?
Oh, he did, he did send me something on that.
Between 70 and.
Careful.
But it, it doesn't look like it belongs.
Those are iconic.
They are, but we could add to it, and or maybe raise the ground, so like, a typical fifth grader, sixth grader could reach it, because I can't reach them, and I think most fifth graders are as tall as me.
I had that on the list with Casey's trees for our building tours. Matherville Playground and Casey's trees. It literally says that.
They're expensive. I mean, it's crazy expensive, how expensive playground equipment is.
Well, it's everywhere.
Yeah. Get your PTGs, PTAs in, and.
It also can be saved. I'm a parent of a kid that fell standing in Sherard, and broke her arm in three places. It's a broken arm.
Anything else?
No, sir, we're good to go.
Okay. Moving on. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session in Code Room 5, ILS C, Section 120, Subsection C, Subsection, C, Subsection 1 through 12, 16, and 21. Ooh, nice, Dan. Is there a second?
Check it, oh, was that a move?
That was a move.
A motion was made by Mr. Helm, seconded by Mrs. Lyon, to go into executive session. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate it.